Give her just a second and then we'll start.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, we are live.
Thank you, Stephanie. Hello and welcome to this week's City Council Business Meetup. Hello, and welcome to this week's City Council Business Meeting. To start off our meeting today, we have Dablin Duster House here to say our invocation. Dablin, thank you for being with us today.
You're very welcome, and so we gather our minds and hearts before our God, and we pray. God, we continue to add this prayer to the many prayers for our world, our country, and our own area as we journey through this pandemic time. May you just bless each person, no matter how they're involved or challenged or stricken, to know who you are, to turn to you and to one another during this time. I pray for this meeting, for our mayor and the city commission and their decisions, and what they need to do for the area to the best of their ability. And certainly, as we look to tomorrow for Veterans Day, may we be grateful for the lives that have been lost for our freedom and for those who continue to fight for our country and for what is free and peaceful before our God. We pray all of this and so many unspoken needs with faith in Jesus, your Son. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have a slight change on our agenda today. We will be having a proclamation for National Bible Week, but not both proclamations as listed. So Bob, I know you're on the line with us, and Councilwoman Frida Powell is going to read the proclamation about National Bible Week.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor. Whereas the Bible has been a constant source of moral and spiritual guidance for many people throughout the centuries, and whereas the Bible has profoundly influenced art, literature, music, and codes of law, and whereas the Bible has motivated many to acts of compassion and charity, and whereas the Bible continues to provide inspiration, hope, and comfort for millions of Americans today, and whereas National Bible Week is a time to be reminded of the Bible's unique place in American life, and the Amarillo Camp of the Gideon International is sponsoring the Bible Reading Marathon in Amarillo. And whereas this annual celebration has encouraged the reading of the Bible. Now therefore, we, Mayor and City Council members of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 23rd through November 27th, 2020, as National Bible Week in Amarillo and encourage interested citizens to participate in this observance given under our hands and seal of office this 10th day of November, 2020, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. Hello, Bob. How are you?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the faith-based community here in the Amarillo area, we thank you for the opportunity to participate. We thank you for your support and for the proclamation of National Bible Week. We also thank you for the opportunity to, for the 41st time, read the Bible from cover to cover. We will be starting this Thursday, November the 12th at 1:00, and we'll be reading through next Monday evening, November the 16th until about 10:30. This year has provided us with many unique challenges, and for the first time, we will be using electronic means as well as live means to accomplish this. It will be broadcast on suddenly Channel 10. And for those who are listening, if you would like to participate, please feel free to give me a call at 806-681-3655. Thank you again, Mayor and Councilmembers, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Bob. We appreciate all the work that y'all do, not just for that event, but you do in our community year-round. At this time, we'll move to the public address portion of our agenda, and I would ask Stephanie and Frances if we have had anyone sign up for a public address.
No, ma'am, we have not.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. So let's move on to Agenda Item 1A, which is an opportunity for the council to ask any questions upfront about anything in the agenda packet or anything on the agenda. So council, do you have any questions we want to address upfront? Okay, not seeing anything. Let's move to Item 1B, which is a coronavirus update. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. We've got Casey Stotin, our Director of Public Health, to walk us through our current status update, and then I'll have a couple of comments, and we'll answer any questions from council. And feel free to interrupt at any point with a question. Casey?
Yes, so we had our press conference this morning, and so I will review most of the information that we talked about on the press conference and then add just a few points. So as of today, there are a total of 17,391 total cases of COVID-19 reported in Potter and Randall County, 9,924 cases in Potter County, and 7,467 cases in Randall County. We have a total of 11,435 recoveries, and we're really glad about each and every recovery. And we're up to 196 deaths here in our community. We're really heartbroken about each and every death. That leaves us with 5,760 active cases here in our community. Each of the cases do represent a unique individual. The rolling seven-day positivity average for Potter and Randall Counties is 27%, and the positivity rate at the drive-through testing site is at 49%. The five-day positive case average is 483 new cases per day. The public health drive-through testing site is still operational, and individuals can call 378-6300 to be screened and directed to the test site. Last week, we recorded a record 200 patients tested at the testing site. This week, we have exceeded that. Monday, we tested 212 patients. GA 32's hospitalization rate for the 25-county Panhandle Rack region is over 15% and has been so for 23 consecutive days. Yesterday's Rack hospitalization percentage was at 30.95%, meaning that nearly 31% of all hospitalized patients have COVID-19. Locally, our total hospitalizations is 327 patients in our hospitals, BSA and Northwest. Adult bed utilization is at 90%, ICU utilization is at 92%, and ventilator use is at 79%. The hospitalization rate here in our community is at 5.67%. This is a little different than what I reported during the press conference. The numbers that I had for the total hospitalization numbers were yesterday's numbers, and so as the hospitals were reporting their data on that press conference, I adjusted that math a little bit. So it's a little different than what I reported on the press conference, but the hospitalization rate is at 5.67%. That means that 5.67% of the total active cases are requiring hospitalization. And so those numbers are a little bit different than the Rack region, but still their hospitalization percentage. But I think both are very meaningful numbers. You can find those data points at amarilloalerts.com each day when we update our report card. We are still at Level Red. Conditions remain consistent with Level Red, as we've just outlined. We'll be reissuing another Level Red tomorrow, and that will be effective for two weeks. During this morning's press conference, Dr. Weiss at Northwest Texas Hospital used words like panicked, stressed, overcapacity. BSA and Northwest are both using temporary nurses provided by our Rack, and they have both requested and received extra ventilators, and they're both using those extra ventilators. Elective surgeries have been postponed. The VA has 22 COVID-positive patients in-house, with 50% of those patients requiring ICU care. All of our hospitals are utilizing their internal search plans and expanding their ICU and CCU care outside of the walls of their traditional units. Staff there at the hospitals are exhausted. We have children waking up in our community without parents. We have parents waking up without their children. We have husbands and wives waking up without each other this morning. Our healthcare community is beyond what they have ever seen before. So we have an opportunity here to make a difference by wearing our masks, limiting our social gatherings, staying home if we're sick or if we've been exposed to COVID-19. And so I'm asking our community yet again to please make those decisions to save lives here in our community and to relieve the strain on the healthcare system. And that's all I have.
Mayor, I've got something to add, but I want to give you all a chance to let all that soak in and also ask Casey any questions you have.
Council, y'all have questions for Casey? Eddie, I can see you talking, but I can't hear you.
Yeah?
Yeah, a little louder, though.
Okay. Maybe this will help. Is that making things better?
It does, yes.
Okay, my bad. I had my coffee cup sitting in front of my microphone, so. So Casey, can you give just a little perspective on this? I know that an average stay for somebody with the flu that ends up having to be hospitalized is one to four days. From a perspective standpoint, do we know what the average is here in Amarillo? I know across the country, the averages were from 12 to 21 days. Do we know what the average time spent in the hospital is in Amarillo?
Yeah, that's a great question. In fact, Dr. Weiss kind of talked about that this morning. So he talked about, you know, generally, it's at least two weeks. And if you're requiring mechanical ventilation, sometimes that even extends into the four- and five-week timeframe. And so they're really carrying this tremendous amount of care for the patients. And so the hospital staff, man, I don't think that we can appreciate them more at this time.
I think you're right. I think that's a real stark thing. I mean, there's all these figures, and you can show the certain percentages are low or do whatever. But the problem is, is every time somebody catches COVID and their case does not turn out well, and they end up having to go to the hospital, they're in the hospital on average at least five times as if they had the flu. It's a huge, huge difference, and it's really tasking all the healthcare workers that are here in town. And actually, across the Panhandle, I actually ended up having to see a nurse on emergency basis yesterday, and I didn't even realize that some of these Rack nurses are going to the hospitals in Perryton, and they're driving back and forth every day and staying here. And she's been here for, I think, for two months, and she was from the Northwest. And she was talking about how crazy that things are, even in the small communities right now.
You know, as a nurse myself, like, these are my friends that I went to nursing school with, and I just pray for them every day and pray for their families and just really hope that we can turn this around here in our community.
Casey, what are other communities doing that we're not doing?
I think that, you know, masking is so important, limiting social interactions, so really just being thoughtful of who you're with and who you're around. And then if you choose to be around people, just really, you know, wearing your masks, keeping those distances, not going to work sick. The things that we need to do to make this better aren't hard, but they just take some effort and they take some thought, but they're not hard.
Other questions for Casey, Council?
Casey, can you explain how does somebody move into the recovery column? Kind of what's the protocol right now for somebody receives a positive test? I know there's a certain time period that's identified as a quarantine time period, but, you know, how do people know when they're officially not at risk to go back to work or interact?
That's a great question. So it's a minimum of 10 days from the date that you tested positive. And if you, at the end of that 10 days, if you have been fever-free without the need for Tylenol or Advil or any fever-reducing medications, and your symptoms have significantly reduced, like, you're not coughing anymore, you're not... You know, your symptoms are very, very significantly reduced, and you haven't had fever for 24 hours. At the end of that 10 days, then you would be considered recovered. And you are probably thinking about all of those, the mass testing events, maybe even such as the prison or different groups where public health can't... We may not have contact information, or we've attempted to call somebody several times, and they haven't answered. We wait four weeks before we move that case to the recovered column. And we do that because we want to make sure that we leave enough time that that person has either recovered or we have been notified of a death. And so that four weeks allows for that process to take place. And so if there are, like, the mass testing events where we don't have contact information or where we aren't able to get ahold of somebody, they haven't answered our calls, or like right now where we're seeing 500 new cases a day, our staff just can't keep up with that volume. And so if we're not notified of a death, then after four weeks, we move that case into the recovered column.
And so that's changed a little bit on the getting retested. We're not doing that necessarily. You know, so if someone's not sure... Do you know what the requirements are in getting retested? Just to see that you do get a negative or if your employer requires that you have, you know, after you've tested positive, to actually get a test that shows negative. Does the city do those? Does that qualify for a drive-through? What would somebody do for that type of a follow-up?
So the CDC, even over the summer, the CDC stopped recommending that test-based strategy. And so we don't recommend it either. And so that's what that would be, would be a test-based strategy to return to work. And so we work with employers and persons to utilize that non-test-based strategy. And if someone is still symptomatic, then they need to remain home, even after that 10 days is over.
So it's more calendar and symptom management? Okay, thank you.
Another question?
Yeah, I want to make one more comment, kind of based upon something that I think needs to be said, kind of based upon the questioning, you know, that Elaine just made, because I think it's real important. You know, in the past, and I still hear it from time to time, people say that there's way more testing going on, and that's why there's way more positive tests. But the first thing that I would want to direct them to, to really look at, is that positivity rate. When almost half the tests that come through the drive-up turn positive, that was never that way back whenever, early on. We might have a 10% or 15% number of tests that were turning positive, but a 49% positivity rate coming out of the drive-through and an average across town being... and a average across town being 27%, that really means this is out of control. And we need to do the things to keep everybody else protected, not even so much us. We need to be protecting everybody else out there. This is not going away. We've got to do everything we can to protect those around us so that we can come out of this with as few deaths as possible and as few side effects as possible. And the side effects are almost as devastating as, as death in several of these cases. So I think it's real important to understand it's not an increased number of testing, it's an increased number of cases.
And we, I think, you know, the numbers of cases we measure, it's a measurement tool, but really it's important to know who's positive so that we can stop the spread of, of additional exposures. But the number is, is the way that we measure that.
Any other questions? Casey, we appreciate you and your team very much.
Yes, we do.
Don't grow weary.
Thank you, guys.
Jared, anything else on COVID?
Yes, ma'am. I think you can obviously see the strain on our healthcare community. I can guarantee you, knowing a number of people in our healthcare community, that they won't break. But we're going to start seeing thousand yard stairs pretty soon. And anybody who's, 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 who's worked with people in, in sustained stressful situations knows what I'm talking about. We all have a role and a responsibility that we, that we play. Every single person listening, watching, participating in this call right now knows and should know based on the things that have been said in the press conferences by the mayor and healthcare professionals, me and others, that our best weapon, our best tool right now is a face covering when we're around anybody. In all the situations that's stipulated in the governor's executive order, GA 29. That's how we can take care of our healthcare professionals and that's how we can take care of our neighbors. That said, we also are in the midst of implementation of an alternative service delivery plan for all city facilities. This is, the purpose of this is to reduce face-to-face contact, thereby one, reducing transmission spread opportunities for coronavirus, but also setting example to all of our neighboring jurisdictions and private sector businesses. It affects all city departments from Amarillo City Transit to Parks and, and all of our outward-facing departments and inward-facing departments as well. I would say that one department that affects people most, most directly, well, two departments, library and Parks and Recreation. At the library, we're providing curbside services, so we're still checking out books and we're still assisting people with anything they need from the library. But we are not open to the public, so people can just walk around and wander around. I know that's one of the best ways to check out a book is just walk around and see what hits you, what strikes you, I want to read that. So that's an impact. It's a unfortunate casualty of the situation we find ourselves in, in this community. It is however, a reasonable sacrifice that we're going to have to make in order to set the example that we need to set and to reduce the face-to-face interactions that contribute to passing on of coronavirus. And another department that, that really stands out is Parks and Recreation. So we've made several adjustments to service delivery, including our parks are open to the public, but we've discontinued reservations and rental of park amenities. We've discontinued the use of city facilities for athletics, basically inviting people in to gather in large groups. We have, the golf courses are still open for green fee play only, but we have discontinued all tournaments. We've discontinued all recreation activities, again, activities where we bring in large groups of people. We've discontinued class instruction and facility rentals at Warford Activity Center. It will stay open for general usage with no more than 10 people allowed in the gym or the pool at one time and with social distancing required, face mask, et cetera. And the zoo is open for general usage with indoor facilities closed and no groups over 10 persons allowed. So we are still providing all of the services that we need to provide, but there are certain areas where we have made changes to how we provide those services to restrict and reduce the opportunities for people to gather in large groups. I can also answer any questions you have about utility billing, vital statistics, the civic center or other departments. Is there any questions I can answer regarding our alternative service delivery plan? Basically just a modification of how we provide services to our community to reduce face-to-face interactions, but we're still providing all of those key and critical services to our community. And I would also say that, to say that we're being militant about the use of face coverings in all situations stipulated by the governor's executive order, GA 29, would be an understatement. It is the primary and only topic for all of our department head meetings and organizational meetings. We're making it the number one thing that we're doing right now to make sure that we're setting an example and we're trying to get every single team member. We have over 2,200 full-time employees right now. And understanding that they're doing a good job setting the example at work is not enough. We have been putting out the message to our entire team that what you do when you're out and about, what you do when you're going to Walmart, Lowe's and all the other places, the church and all the other places they go, every single person you interact with who knows you knows where you work. You're setting an example by doing the right thing and wearing your face covering when you're around other people. And we're trying to really get that message out for our team because that's going to make a difference in our community. And the more businesses that can do that with us and partner with us in that message, the better we're going to be on our hospitalization rates. I'd happy to answer any questions you have.
Council, any questions?
Jared, I, I had one question. I know kind of back in March, we had transitioned to a lot of, doing a lot of remote work in departments where possible. And I think we had shifted away from that over time. And so just a clarification, kind of the percentage of our, our staff that was working remotely and kind of how that, that has shifted with the timeline and where we are with that right now?
I don't have exact percentages. I would say that it was a larger percentage back when we were in the full shutdown mode that the state had put, had requested or directed. We are still doing that now, but the guideline is that every person working from home, we have a very detailed checklist to assess whether or not an employee is eligible and capable of providing their, their, doing their duties from home instead of at work. We also have very stringent guidelines to make sure that people are being productive when they're at home. The, the main takeaway is we want to make sure that we're taking advantage of it where appropriate. But when we do, that employees are being fully productive when they're working from an alternate work site. I, I believe that anecdotally, I don't have exact percentages and I apologize. And I can get that information for you relatively quickly because we are going through a very stringent documentation process for every employee that's working from home. So we know the exact numbers. I just don't have it in front of me. But we have less working from home now than we had when we were in that initial statewide shutdown. And, and one of the reasons for that is because there's no statewide shutdown and because we're really focusing on making sure that everybody working from home is able to be fully productive. So sometimes there's barriers like technology, maybe the job itself doesn't really lend itself to being performed at home. In areas where the alternate service delivery plan has affected the department's ability to be able to fully utilize their people, we're shifting those people over to, for example, Casey Stoughton's Public Health Office to make, to assist with contact tracing, possibly over to the transit area to assist with cleaning of buses or to a variety of other departments whose workload have actually gone up through this process. I know that was a long answer for a short question, but I can get you the information on exactly how, what percentage of employees are working from home.
Good. Yeah, that will be fine. And you, you have primarily answered the question, just kind of the range that it's not back to full implementation of back in March and April, but you know, a larger percentage than we've been operating with over the summer. So yeah, you can just shoot those numbers out later for updating things.
Yeah, for sure. We, the, the key here is to continue to provide the full range of services to our residents. We've just modified really the, the face-to-face interactions. In, in some cases, that's been a pretty dramatic impact, like in the parks or at the libraries. However, outside of those, we have reasonable workarounds to be able to work around that face-to-face interaction requirement. But we are also doing very managed face-to-face interactions, both the utility billing, at permitting, planning, building safety here at the city manager's office. So when appropriate, we're setting up face-to-face meetings with the appropriate safeguards in place, distancing, masking, all those things.
Any other questions, council?
Yeah, I've got one more. So I, I know that our RAC is the number two RAC in the state and El Paso is, is actually in a worse position than what we are. And I know that either some, I think it was county officials that tried to set some more stringent plan in place and you know, they end up getting taken to court to try and block that from happening. So it really still falls back in the lap of the governor to make decisions on what we can and what we can't do. So I'm just really curious, mayor or Mr. City Manager, have either one of you guys been in contact with the governor's office? Has he had any, has he given any information as to if he's leaning one way or the other or doing something more than what's already happening? Or have you all had any contact with the governor's office?
Um, I have had some indirect contact. Of course, just standing and watching on the sidelines. There's not just leadership decisions being made here, but across the state and across the nation, there have been political decisions that unfortunately have affected how, how governments, not our local government, but how governments are responding to the COVID situation. So what we have is an order from the governor that everyone would wear a mask if they're in a public place. Inside that order, and I'll let Jared speak specifically to this, it does say that you could issue a ticket and a fine to someone who was not wearing a mask. But it puts some requirements logistically on how to do that. And those requirements are not practical when you actually put them into the system that we already have. So Jared, let's just pause for a minute and talk about, because there are citizens wanting to know, why are we not using the enforcement measures that the GA 32 gives us? Let's just talk practically about how hard that, it's one thing to put it down on paper. It's actually very hard to implement it on spur of the moment's notice in a system that's never done that before. So talk about that.
Yes, ma'am. I think it's important to note that any observation we make in this, in this discussion is not a criticism, but an observation of some of the challenges associated with enforcement as it relates to the governor's order. The governor's order requires that a individual who is not in compliance with the face mask requirement in GA 29 is given a warning prior to giving an actual citation that would include a fine. The challenges of that, it, it's similar to catching a fish in a lake, tagging it and then trying to catch it again. You can catch it and if you could give it a citation right when you caught it, then you know, mission accomplished, you move on. But from a report management system standpoint, from a records tracking standpoint, it is very difficult to issue someone a citation, have that record then blast out to the entire force who, who would then be able to pick that person up and know if they've been given a warning previously or not. That assumes that from a, a, a tasking standpoint, that the priority of issuing those citations supersedes the urgency of whatever other tasks our police department is currently employed in, whether it's crime, active crimes in progress, speeding. You know, there's, there's a lot of value-based decisions that have to be made on where we task our officers. So there's some logistical challenges there to enforcement as it's presented in the governor's order. And we are required to give those warnings first and be able to track that if we're to be able to demonstrate that we've given a warning previously. The fact that a verbal warning is also an acceptable warning also complicates the tracking of that and then the enforceability of it. Because a protest to that ticket is going to be very difficult when you say that, well, I gave them a verbal warning and they didn't, you know, adhere to it. So there's some inherent logistical challenges and legal challenges to being able to enforce those. There are some suggestions and I'm working with our internal team to put together what suggestions we would request from the governor's office if we were to want to modify these, the orders to where they would be a little bit more effective from an enforcement standpoint. But I continue to believe that enforcement is not necessarily the way out of the challenge. If we could enforce it effectively, we would do it because it does have a, 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 it does discourage people from flaunting the governor's order. However, even if we could, I, I still don't believe that that's the way. People need to buy in that this is a real fight that we're in and they need to embrace, it's not that much of a hardship to wear your face covering to safeguard your neighbors. We've endured hardship, all of us have endured various levels of hardship, whether it's in war zones or just in our own neighborhoods, in our own walks of life. This really is a first world problem, to, to, to use a common term, not a big problem. We can do this if we would just embrace the face coverings. But yes, from an enforcement standpoint, there are a lot of logistical challenges. From enforcement standpoint, we have focused on using state law and city ordinances to be able to affect change in locations where we have egregious problems. We had a bar where we enforced our local certificate of occupancy for that bar, shut them down, reported them to the state and then TABC shut them down for an additional 30 days. So we can be effective with the tools we have in place already that we know are effective and defensible in, in a court of law. It's a little bit more challenging when we have a face covering requirement that has 10 different caveats where you, you, you are not required to wear a face mask. And it's a little bit difficult to prove that someone didn't have a medical condition or wasn't performing a religious service or, you know, any of the other caveats that are built into the GA 29. So it's a little bit complicated to, from an enforcement standpoint. I know people say that's cop-out, but we have to make sure that whatever we're doing is legally sound.
And I think it does, Eddie, so Jared presents the operational challenges of trying to enforce what was quickly drafted and put into a governor's executive order, not normally going through the normal legislative process where things get honed and better filtered to know what's effective, what are we, what's practical in, you know, implementing and enforcement of it. But I think it's also just, let's just face the reality that people in our community have very different opinions on whether or not it should be enforced. And you know, sometimes leadership is trying to listen to all of those voices, respect all of those voices and then through discussion, through education, through facts, getting people to buy in on their own. And I think that's the city that we would rather live in, is the city where we have conversation and education that moves people's hearts to be stirred, to make a decision that would protect their neighbors versus we discharge our police force, which really doesn't have the manpower to take this on and, and we begin house by house or you know, person by person, an enforcement campaign across the city. So it is something that we are struggling with, the five of us as a city council. I know y'all are engaging and hearing people's opinions in the community, many of whom feel strongly that it should be enforced, many of whom feel strongly that it shouldn't. But what we, what we need is for our hospital capacity to go down. So I mean, so we have greater capacity because we have fewer patients in the hospital. And the patients that we can best control are the COVID patients. So that's what we need to target and that's the strategy. We have many tactics that we're implementing to do that, some of, some of which you're seeing on this call and talking to business owners and. seeing on this call and talking to business owners and to individuals and asking them to wear masks, asking them to cancel social events. Even the decision to cancel social events is not an easy decision. There's a lot that goes into that. We're eight months now as a community tired of COVID, which is not an excuse to not do the best thing for your neighbor. But some organizations, it's a life or death, and I don't mean breathe in, breathe out kind of life, but I mean organizationally, their life is on the line with these events. You have nonprofits and charities who are canceling their one time a year that keeps them afloat and their doors open and accomplishing their missions. And so they're not, they're not able to just look at it on what do our hospitals need. There are many layers and many perspectives into each one of these decisions. And again, I think our position as a city, our job is to get them the facts they need as leaders to make the best choice both for the community and for their organization individually. But let me just be very frank, there are no easy choices during this season. My heart hurts the most in considering the work that's being done at our hospitals, considering how staff is making sacrifices, the shifts that they're working, the suffering that they're seeing, the exhaustion that they're pushing through, and hearing the stories of families that are suffering, either from a death or even just from a family member who had a severe case and is still struggling with recovery, either in or out of the hospital. Those are difficult stories to hear, and they're real, and they're happening to our friends and neighbors right here in the city. I'd be welcome to hear anyone else's thoughts or suggestions for things that we're not doing that we need to do better or start doing. But there are no easy options. I'm really glad you asked that question, Eddie, and, and we've had a chance to go down that trail and, and have this discussion.
Well, I think that trail is actually, it's a longer trail, and I think that's one of the things that I feel like that we have to do is we have to look back at some of the things that have happened and some of the data that's sitting out there. And one of the data that I would have people go back and look at is the average new caseload per, the rolling seven day per caseload. If you look at the United States, we have never, we really have never gone all the way back down. We peaked that first time in April, and we never, we barely went back down. Then we peaked again in July, and we never actually came back down even to the April peak. And now then we're peaking above it. So I've heard some talk about the fact that the real reality is we haven't actually crested the first wave yet, and we're still seeing the case numbers and the caseloads. I, I mean, it just came across just a second ago. What is it? We had 514 new cases today. And I can remember in April and June, we had, what, maybe 100 new cases? And we're five times what it was when we were shut down back in April and May. And so I, I think we have to sit back for a second, and we've got to get a new perspective and realize, we're not going to wake up tomorrow and this is going to go away. We're not going to wake up in a week and this is going to have dropped off significantly. We've got a long haul ahead of us. We've got cold weather ahead of us. It's a cold winter. Cases have a tendency to be worse in the winter when you're talking about a viral infection. People are more indoors than they are outdoors. And so I, I think part of it is we also have to wrap our mind around the fact that we've got to go into this for the long haul, just like we do in many other cases, many other hard things that we face in our personal lives from day to day, and realize that this is the next thing, and if we are going to defeat this, then we're going to have to do the right thing for a long time. And it's not going to end tomorrow. It's not going to end next week. It's probably not going to end next month. We'll probably be in 2021 before we start to see things begin to calm back down. And so we just have got to get our mind wrapped around what it looks like down the road or what we want it to look like, and it's up to us to do the right things that make that happen.
Mayor, I think it's important to note, in response to the question from Dr. Sauer, I, I did, I did point out some of the challenges associated with enforcing GA 29 as it's laid out in GA 29. I also showed some of the alternative methods we've been using to effect positive change. We're also, we've got a team of internal staff members that are working on suggestions that we might be able to propose to the governor's office that would make positive outcomes a little bit easier to find, not necessarily enforcement. I, I continue to think that enforcement is not necessarily the best tool, although people respond to that. But we're also using existing tools that we have available to us, methods inside the Texas Health and Safety Code to regulate how businesses are enforcing masks, masks and face coverings inside their establishments, other suggestions that we can find from, from insider organization and through other professional organizations. So we're doing everything we can to find effective ways to encourage people to wear masks and face coverings. But at the end of the day, until people buy in and, and recognize and acknowledge the challenge and the situation that we are currently faced with, we're going to have a hard time getting everyone to take an active role, take an active positive role. So can I give you another perspective? So we had 514 new cases today. So if we take the hospitalization, the last number that Casey gave us, which is hospitalization of total active cases, 5.67%, that means within 10 days, we're going to have 29 new patients in the hospital, and they will stay there for an average of 14 days. And then we're going to add on to that, yesterday, we had 400 and something, so we're going to add another 25 patients. So in two days, we've added 50 patients to the hospital. Now you just keep on doing that on a linear progression and see where we're headed. This is serious. I think a, a good example, and it's completely left field, but mayor, you were talking about, we're going to, it's going to take a little bit of sacrifice on the part of our families, our, our social groups, our clubs. I'm on the board of directors for a, a, a social club here in town. We met last night and we ended up postponing our Christmas party because it just wasn't the right time to bring in a bunch of members face-to-face, many of whom, you know, fall into those high-risk categories because we want to see each other. Fellowship is so important to us. Spending time together is so important to us, and it, and it is. But in this situation, we thought discretion was the better part of valor, and we're going to look forward to having a Christmas party around the Fourth of July. You know, I like breakfast at night. I like Christmas in summer. So we're going to do it. It, it's the right thing to do. It's hard to do because we're postponing fellowshipping together. But that is an example of something that we can do as a community that will safeguard people.
I can't remember if it was Eddie or, or you, mayor, that, that made this comment, but I want to follow up with, I think there is the reality too that we have to recognize as a governing body, there are certain things we can control and certain things we cannot control. And I think one of the things that we are best at being able to effectively control is information and being sure that exactly what we are doing today is providing that information. And Eddie, your, your calculations and just projecting that out, that's information for, to equip people to make informed decisions. And, and mayor, you mentioned, you know, that as well, that, that we're wanting to be sure that our community, that we are not sugarcoating anything, we're not exaggerating anything, we're just laying the information out there. And the reality that some people will make different decisions with that exact same information, and the bottom line is that we cannot control that, no matter what levels, and certainly to the level of mandates and enforcements that might give us a semblance of feeling that we were more in control. At the end of the day, I personally don't think it, it still would. And so I think that part of the frustration is, is when you see the situation, you want to have a tool that is, you know, something we can control more. And I think that it is something that, that we have to acknowledge. You know, I'll have people call and, and ask different things about, you know, what else can we be doing? What else can be, we be doing? And the bottom line is that, my personal opinion is that it is still going to come up to, come down to individual decisions and choices and that our best, our best response is providing people all the information and tools they need to make the best informed decisions they can.
Those are good comments. I appreciate those. Howard, do you have something you want to say?
Yes. I'd like to, next to City Manager, he and I had a pretty lengthy conversation the other day, and because I've had people call me, wanted us to enforce individuals wearing masks, and that's hard to do. I don't know that we have a police department large enough to, to do that. The topic of getting each company to enforce that, when people go into a store, at the door, it could be, if they have a mask, great. If they don't have a mask, give them a mask, and then tell them that they've got to wear the mask all the time they're in the store. And then if the, if the store is penalized, if they don't follow up and keep customers walking in the store to wearing a mask, could that be fine? And that would lessen the number of people or companies we've got to enforce. So comment on that if you could.
Yes, sir. By the, the, the reading of GA 29, it is specifically targeted at a person not following, not wearing their, their face covering in a situation where they're required to. There's a number of challenges, I kind of walked through those earlier, but, but not the least of which is the, the requirement to document that they've been given a warning, either verbal or written. There's logistical challenges there, but it, it doesn't mean that it's impossible. With regard to the businesses, the business, as far as GA 29 goes, which is the face covering requirement, there's no way to use GA 29 to cite a business. However, a business is supposed to be, in order to be able to operate under GA 32, they are supposed to be compliant with all of the governor's executive orders. In, in legal reviews, it's difficult to hold the business accountable for someone that's inside the establishment. However, in looking at, I mentioned the Texas Health and Safety Code and other things, we're evaluating right now the possibility of using the Texas Health and Safety Code, the nuisance standards located in section 341 dot 011, to be able to warn or provide a notice of violation, but not necessarily a citation, if an object, place, or condition that is possible and probable, a, a probable medium of disease transmission to or between humans is present in the facility. And if we have a number of people not wearing face coverings inside the facility that are interacting within the social distance barriers, then it is logical to assume that we can use that Texas Health and Safety Code to serve as the basis for citations against businesses. Now, I, I think that the, the, the goal here is to educate and seek compliance and more aggressive measures, more thorough measures that they can put in place inside their places of business to make sure that patrons are observing the governor's orders. So we're being as aggressive as we can reasonably be to identify ways that we can use our existing laws that are proven to be defensible and legal, rather than using something that is maybe not. So we, we are doing everything we can to observe and, and, and be compliant with the governor's orders, but in some situations, they're not exactly the, the, the best tool to get enforcement or to, from a punitive measure, to get enforcement. But there are existing rules that will allow us to do the same, achieve the same goal without changing the executive orders, which are going to be likely challenging to do. Hopefully that wasn't too much of a walk around.
No, I, I would just also like to say, Mr. City Manager, that, you know, I, I don't want us to be putting our police officers in just an increased difficult situation. What we ask them to do on a daily basis is already an incredible challenge, and then, and then adding another layer of something that is, I think would be in a major challenge. I know this is an extreme, but I don't want one of our officers to end up on the news somewhere for having tasered somebody because they weren't wearing a mask at an event. You know, it's like, I, I know it's an exaggeration, but I'm just saying, you put them in those situations, we're asking them to enforce something when, and if somebody is hostile to that, I just, I think that I want to be very protective of our police officers in any type of situations like that. And, and, and for us to, to realize, we would be having to make an assumption on other people's decision-making as well. We don't know that that person hasn't recovered from COVID, that day got a negative test, and they are making a, a wise decision and a respectful decision towards their neighbors and community. And it requires so much assumptions on other people's decisions. And so, again, I know that's an extreme and, but I want us to be thinking through the, the, the huge challenges. There's a reason why we don't move immediately into mandates and fines and enforcements.
I would, I hear that 100%, and I would first say that our police department, police force, certainly our officers on the streets, are more than fully tasked without issuing citations for face covering violations. I am in frequent contact with a number of different city manager groups where we are discussing amongst ourselves, has anyone issued citations based on GA 29? I'm sure it's happened. I don't have a reason to, to, I, I'm sure that based on the existence of GA 29, that somebody's used it. None of the city managers that I've been talking to, and they're all larger cities, have had a single citation issued based on just what's allowed in GA 29 because of the challenges in enforcing it, and because their police forces are fully tasked in already providing public safety services. That said, in every situation where a police officer, or more frequently, an environmental health officer or fire marshal has interacted with a citizen or a business saying, hey, we need to get better compliance here, they immediately comply. That does not mean that it is lasting compliance, but they, they are very responsive when we're there. We have never had a situation where someone said, no, not going to put it on. So we're going to continue working that way. We definitely recognize, recognize the challenges of jumping out there on a thin branch and getting really aggressive with something that is questionable as to its enforceability. Our officers are going to make really good, they're trained to make off-the-cuff decisions, very quick, tense situations. They can de-escalate very well, they're trained in that. I am confident that they're not going to put them, put us in the position of being a, a poster child for some type of overreach. At the same time, we are being very liberal in, in, in talking to people so that they know, hey, you need to be wearing a face covering. In every, every one of those situations, we've, we've had people very quick to respond in a positive way.
I think it just brings it back around to, we get to decide what kind of city we want to live in. And I think all of us know in our heart and in our fiber as a city, we are about taking care of each other. And so continuing to get the facts out there that a mask doesn't protect you, a mask protects the people that are around you, and they're wearing a mask to protect you is a really important piece of information to get out there. And I also thought, I think it was last week on the COVID press conference, someone in the press asked a question about how, how do you handle people as we're having more and more positive cases? um, how, how do you handle people as we're having more and more positive cases, you know, almost 20,000 people? Um, you know, how do you handle them in the public? Should they wear a mask? Should they not wear a mask? And one of the doctors made an excellent point. They said, we're wearing masks now because of COVID, but a mask protects any kind of respiratory germ from leaving hopefully your body and going on to somebody that you're with. And they said, the issue for us right now is not spreading disease that could put someone with a compromised immune system in the hospital. So, yes, if you've had a positive, if you've had COVID, you might not be spreading COVID, but you might be spreading flu, or you might be spreading some other respiratory, um, agent that is, might cause somebody you're with to be sick. So just recognizing that the season we're in right now, like Dr. Weiss said today during the press conference, we're at war with a very small and an almost invisible enemy, but we are at war. And while I believe that's going to be a fairly short period of time on the scope of our lifetime, it's just a matter of months. Um, until I think we'll win that war, we have to fight it. And, um, so I really appreciate you bringing that up, Elaine, whether they need to wear a mask or not wear a mask isn't just related to COVID based on what our local doctors are saying. It's, they're asking citizens to do anything they can do to decrease the chance of someone going to the hospital, whether they're in the hospital because of COVID, because of flu, or any other situation. Um, that's what we're being asked by our medical community as citizens. Um, so I'm really glad to have a chance to just repeat what I've heard those doctors say on that question. Good conversation about the, again, there's no easy option here. So I'm thankful to be leading with four godly people who, um, respect each other and respect the different perspectives that are in our community. And most importantly, I know, take these things in prayer with faith, asking for wisdom. So I appreciate our staff and the leadership that Jared's brought. Uh, but there are no easy options here. Any final comments before we move on? Okay, let's move on then to item 1C, which is a monthly budget update. Mr. City Manager? You're on mute, Jared.
Yeah, yeah. We've got Assistant City Manager Laura Storrs, uh, Chief Financial Officer here to, uh, give us our monthly budget update, will be followed immediately by Andrew Freeman, uh, to give us the sales tax update. Laura?
Good afternoon, um, Council. We have a brief update for you all on, um, it's a monthly update, but this is actually the end of a quarter and the end of a fiscal year. And so we wanted to bring, um, we wanted to bring that information and just give a quick update. Now, before we get started, I wanted to state, we will bring audited financial statements to Council, um, through our comprehensive annual financial report, and that will be around the February 2021 timeframe. So please know that the numbers I am sharing with you all today are still prior to certain audit adjustments, and these numbers could change, um, but by the time we issue audited financial statements. So again, we're looking at September 30th, 2020 numbers with Council. Um, we'll start just briefly going over general fund, um, year-end budget. Looking at revenue, our total budget for the year was 188.4 million dollars. We actually, um, recognized revenue of 183.6 million dollars. So that created a negative variance of almost $5 million. So we were, we knew early on that our revenue was going to be impacted through COVID, and so this is, is about where we're ending up for the year, is right around the $5 million under budget for revenue. To give a little bit more detail into that, you can see our property tax collection stayed strong for the year. Sales tax came in just slightly below budget for the year by, um, about half a million dollars. And then you'll see one of our biggest impacted revenue streams was our hotel occupancy taxes. They came in almost $2 million below budget. Um, our gross receipts business tax, um, that is our franchise fees. They also, um, in total came in about 1.1 million below budget for the year. And the bulk of that was driven by the electricity franchise fees. License and permits came in pretty much flat to budget, over by about $50,000. And then charges for services, um, did see quite a bit of impact as well. Um, they, it came in below budget by about 1.2 million dollars, and the bulk of that was related to the parks and recreation programs that were canceled through the spring and summer months. And so we did not recognize that revenue that normally, normally comes in from those programs. And that was all related to COVID measures. And then last on the general fund, um, fines and forfeitures came in about 1.2 million dollars below budget. And that is a continued trend that we're seeing. Um, those are your municipal court fines and fees. And as we did see a, a period of time where not as many tickets were being issued, we also pushed, um, a lot of court cases out. And so those revenue streams, along with state legislative changes, are continuing to trend below budget. On the expense side, general fund expenses came in, um, the budget for the year was 188.2 million dollars. And the actual amount spent was 174.4. Um, so that creates, um, it, it comes in as a, a, a negative variance, but that's actually to the good. We were under budget on the expense side by 13.8 million. So when you net, um, this budget on the expense side being under budget and the budget on the revenue side, or the actuals on the revenue side coming in below budget, we were about $9 million to the good overall from a general fund, um, point of view. And again, just a reminder, this is before year-end audit adjustments. So these numbers, um, will vary slightly from what we're presenting today. On this next slide here, and I won't go into detail, you all have seen this many times. These were just the outlined efforts that were put in place in early March to try to combat, um, the decrease in revenues that we might see through COVID. And so these were the measures that were put in place and originally identified from a budget standpoint. On this next slide here, we're, this is the overall sales tax for the year ending September 30th. And you can see that, um, we, compared to budget, we had a few positive months. Um, but as compared to prior year, so the 18, 19 actuals, our 19, 20 actuals came in slightly higher, um, through the end of the year by about $785,000. So that was, um, an encouraging thing to see, but you will see that, um, our total uh, sales cap tax collection for the year came in slightly below budget by about half a million dollars. And that was because we had included a two and a half percent increase in the sales tax budget over the 18, 19 actuals because we had been seeing several years of trending, um, higher sales tax collections. So, um, feel that this came in very strong considering, um, we were in a pandemic for most of the fiscal year. This next slide here is, um, this is your gross hotel occupancy tax collections. You can see the trend against budget and the trend against actuals. Um, about the April timeframe, that's when we really started seeing the impact, um, from the pandemic as people were staying home more, were not, um, traveling. We didn't see business travel coming into the area. Um, and so we certainly saw the larger impact during the April, May, June timeframe. And then those numbers started coming back slightly. So overall, for the year, um, we were about 25% below budget or about 1.8 million dollars. Um, and we were down from the prior year by a little under that 25% at, um, just under 1.8 million dollars. Down here is some information on your hotel occupancy tax rebate, um, for the downtown, um, convention hotel. And those numbers as well came in lower than budget and lower than prior year. Um, they had the same impact as the rest of the hotels in the community. Um, on this next slide here, um, I left this in because, um, it's an interesting graph that shows, um, the yellow here is your 18, 19 average occupancy rate by month. And then the blue line is the 19, 20 occupancy rate, um, average occupancy rate for the hotels in the area, um, by month. You can see the drastic drop in the April timeframe, and then slowly it started trending up. And by September, we were, um, a lot closer to where we were the year before. So that was certainly encouraging and still hoping to see some of that travel coming through our area, um, because we know the business travel has certainly, um, slowed down a lot over the past several months. The next slide here is just outlining what the use of those hotel occupancy tax dollars are. Um, you can see our original budget was about 6.4 million. Um, we have a piece that goes to debt service. Then the CVC has a portion that goes also to debt service. We had a piece to pay, um, or to fund some civic center capital, the civic center operations, um, the CVC operations, and then the CVC promotional fund. Through the end of the year, that budget came in lower, uh, than what we had originally budgeted. We were at about 4.8 million versus that 6.4 million, and you can see how each of these categories fared. We certainly pulled back spending quite a bit. I know CVC did a tremendous job really pulling back their spending as much as possible. Um, and appreciate the efforts that they put in place on that as well. And you can see that our debt service funding remained steady and actually grew just slightly for the year. Down below is just outlining what was needed, um, for the fiscal year to fund the debt service associated with the parking garage and the MPEV. And you can see we had sufficient funding for those debt service payments. All debt service were, payments related to those projects were made on time. And we are in good shape for the upcoming ones this new fiscal year. No concerns there.
Laura, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, where civic center capital, those are repairs and infrastructure things that need to happen inside the civic center building. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. That is to address the existing, um, civic center infrastructure. That could be anything from replacing damaged flooring to, um, you know, repairing, um, a sound system to doing um, just various repairs and maintenance, um, and capital projects there at the existing, um, civic center facility.
Okay, thank you.
This next slide, just real briefly, this is the, these are the franchise fees. You can see that the electricity franchise fees were certainly the ones causing the overall franchise fees to come in below budget. And that was due to the continued low fuel factor, um, on those electricity bills. So now let's switch gears just a little bit. We'll talk about utility sales. This slide outlines the city of Amarillo utilities. So up here at the top is, um, solid waste, and you can see that those, um, revenue collections came in very, um, close to budget, just slightly over budget by 1%. The landfill fees came in very strong this past year. They were actually 26% above budget by about 758,000. So a net amount between the two was just under a million dollars above budget or about 4%. Um, on the water cells, um, we started the year, uh, a little bit behind and continued to be behind as COVID first had an impact on our community and businesses were shut down. Um, we did have dry weather towards the end of the summer and the early fall. And so you can see those water cells came in stronger than budget by about 1.8 million. And then sewer cells came in very close to budget, just a little bit over by 372,000. Overall, um, those revenue sources came in about 2.2 million above budget. And then down at the bottom is your drainage, um, utility fee, and that came in above budget as well, um, by a little over half a million dollars. Um, this next part and this last part here, we're going to go over, um, medical claims. That is another large portion of the overall city spend. And you can see that our annual budget was about 23.2 million dollars. And our actual claims, um, came in just below 21 million. Um, so that was a positive variance of 10% or about 2.4 million. And again, COVID had an impact on these, um, expenditures as well as, um, elective procedures were canceled or postponed. And I think, um, certainly for a while, a lot of people, um, you know, postponed just those annual checkups, those certain type things, maybe, um, just waiting through some of the pandemic. And so we are starting to see numbers come back up to a more normal range, but still coming in, um, below what we had anticipated through the budget process. And with that said, um, does Council have any questions on, um, the year-end budget versus actual numbers?
Laura, I have one question back on your slide with the, um, hotel occupancy tax collections and where, um, the, uh, the yellow bar, keep going back one more. It was almost to where, there we go. And, and you commented on this, but if you would just say that again, so it looks like, so the yellow, I'm having trouble seeing just, I need you to enlarge this or something, but that was 28, 2019 occupancy versus this year, that, they are converging. They are very close to being back to where what would have been expected and projected for this time of year, is what I'm seeing.
Yes, ma'am. So we saw towards the end of summer and early, um, fall timeframe, those hotel occupancy numbers were coming up to a more normal level in our community. And so what we have seen is that Amarillo is, has not always been a traditional, um, destination location. It's a lot of times a stopping point on the way to another place. Well, as things started opening up a little bit from the pandemic, people, um, started getting out in their vehicles and traveling and either choosing Amarillo as a destination for a vacation or stopping on their way to somewhere else. Um, the airlines have certainly seen a huge impact as well as more people have, I, I believe, felt more comfortable getting out in their vehicles and chosen to come through Amarillo, which has helped those occupancy rates, um, get back to a normal level. Um, the other thing I will state that's, um, more unfortunate is we have brought in healthcare workers into the area and they're staying at hotels. And so that is also currently having an impact on some of those occupancy rates as well. Um, the average daily rates are not faring quite as well as the occupancy rates are. But this is encouraging to see that these, these two data points are coming closer together at this point in time.
Thank you.
Other questions, Council? Okay. That's it on the budget, Laura?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Is Andrew doing the sales tax?
Yes, ma'am. Let's get to the deeper dive on the sales tax.
Okay, great. Let's go there now.
Hey, I'm gonna pull up my screen real quickly. And so this is going to recap our Au- October numbers, which are August actual sales, uh, some of the industry day that we've been seeing, and how they're performing. Overall performance, um, for October was up, uh, 0.50% compared to last year. We are seeing so far three consecutive months of increases. Um, we'll find out how our November, uh, data performed, uh, later this week. Um, looking at the state numbers, they were down three and a half percent. We've typically been performing a few points better than them, so we're hoping to break even or be a little bit positive and not see our numbers turn negative, uh, based on the performance and how we compared with the state. Uh, for October, um, you can see the major industries listed here at the top. Uh, retail again is our biggest performer, a little over 13%. Uh, general services is down 12%. Uh, food is still maintaining a positive, uh, just over, um, half a percent, uh, 0.65. Professionals still down, agriculture, accommodations. Uh, we are seeing some positives with miscellaneous, uh, being up 22% and the manufacturing industry being up almost 4% uh, for the month. Uh, diving in a little bit deeper into the retail numbers, uh, you can see, like we discussed, typically every time, non-store retailers continues to, to boom. Uh, those are your major online retailers, uh, that have a physical presence in Texas compared to the remote sellers. I'll touch on here in a minute. Uh, so these are Amazons and, uh, Ebays of the world. Uh, it's up 173% um, this month. Building materials up 21%, uh, furniture up 10%, uh, sporting goods, hobbies and bookstores, that's one that's really, um, during the pandemic, is seeing a lot more activity compared to previous years, um, with people being outdoors more. So it was up 12%. Um, general merchandise is also performing well at almost three and a half percent. Um, and we are still seeing some, some declines, for example, clothing. And we are still seeing some, some declines, for example, clothing accessory stores is down 7.26%. When looking at the food category, restaurants have been performing better overall at 1.69%. But when we break it down by full service and limited service, the full service is still down 4.2%, but that is better than last month by about five percentage points. So they are starting to see that number continue to improve. Meanwhile, limited serving in eating places are up 7%, which is performing better than the same time last year. And I went ahead and including on, on here drinking establishments. They're still down, of course, most of them are not able to open, some have converted to restaurants, but they're down 38%. But that's doing better than before they were down in the 43%, 57% range. So their numbers are improving with those that have been able to reopen. On remote sellers, that's that category of collections that started in December 2019 of those that can sign up as remote sellers and pay a, a certain sales tax rate, but they're not identified. We don't know what their industry categories are. But we started at 20,000 in collections and 1.2 million sales. October was at 50,000 and 2.8 million sales compared to our highest so far within August of 3.6 million sales. So we are still seeing that number fluctuate a bit month to month. Laura, of course, touched on hotel occupancy. I've got the percentages shown here. So September, of course, is at that 60% level, which is 3.8% lower than the same time period last year. So like Councilmember Hayes was pointing out, it is starting to get a lot better compared to previous. And then here's the average daily rate broken out. So we are still about $5.46 lower than the same time last year for September on the ADR. And then lastly, just to cover our workforce, Amarillo unemployment for September was 5.3% compared to 2.5% last year, and it also a little bit of increase compared to last month. We're in the 4% range. And then for the MSA, August was at 5.1% compared to Texas at 8.3%. In the U.S. it's 7.7. Texas and Amarillo MSA did increase a little bit compared to the U.S., it actually declined just a little bit. As far as the industries in the MSA, six are still showing decreases. I want to highlight a couple of those that are performing well. Government for the month increased 9%. I know for the city, for example, we had a lot of frozen positions as we watched budget revenues, so I think that's a lot of the reason you're seeing that number increase, starting, starting to be able to hire back some of those positions going into new budget year. We saw manufacturing increase just under a percent and trade transportation utilities, almost a half a percent increase. And then our major categories that are still down yearly is leisure and hospitality down 33% and financial activities down 16.2% compared to year-to-date. And I'm happy to answer any more detailed questions you might have.
Any questions for Andrew, council? Andrew and Laura, I think both of you guys are getting really, really good at pushing all of this data into a nice concise presentation, and I want to say thank you for all the work you do in preparing that and tracking it for us. We need this high-level overview of it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to 1E requesting future agenda items and reports from the city manager. You have anything, council? Not seeing anything? Okay, at this time then we'll move on to the consent agenda and anything there that needs to come off for further discussion or questions?
Yes, mayor, I'd like to pull the minutes for the meeting on October 27, 2020.
Other than that?
I move to approve the, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the minutes dated October 27, 2020.
Second.
And moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to approve items B through H on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes with a 5-0 vote. Let's go back and take up item 2A, the minutes from the October 27, 2020 meeting. Councilmember Powell, suggestion on a change?
Yes, mayor. On item B, on those minutes, it states that a motion was made that the following captioned ordinance number 7889 be denied in the, down at the, towards the end of the meeting on the voting criteria, it needs to be reworded. It currently says voting aye were Mayor Protem Smith, Councilmembers Powell and Sauer, voting no were none. The motion carried by a 3-0 vote of the council, it should read voting aye were none, voting no were Mayor Protem Smith, Councilmembers Powell and Sauer. The motion was denied by a 3-0 vote of the council.
Councilmembers Smith and Sauer, we all consent with that change?
Yes, ma'am.
Or have anything to add before we make the motion on that change?
Let me ask you, review with me what item that is on the minutes, please? Well, the motion was to deny. And so when they voted aye, they were agreeing to deny.
So those in favor of denying? I think that's right.
That's the way I read it. Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Well, we, we, we did not vote, we actually voted no, and that's what I wanted it to reflect, that we did say no. So the way it reads is a little bit confusing.
The motion was made in 3B, the last sentence before the ordinance 7889. Motion was made that the following captioned ordinance 7889 be denied. And then the three of us agreed to that, to deny it.
I did make those a little more clear where it said the motion was denied by a 3-0 vote.
That would, what do you think about that, Councilmember Powell? Would that make it more clear for you for all of those?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That was exactly what I was stating as to how it should be reworded so that there's no confusion going forward if we have to go back and review this item.
Okay, great, I appreciate that. It's a, I know it was a, this is an item that's important to have that clarification on.
Correct.
Okay, so with that change made, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 27 meeting?
Yes, mayor, I move to approve the meetings from the October 27, 2020 meeting with the correction as noted.
Okay. Okay, then moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer to make that change and approve the minutes of the October 27 meeting. And I'm abstaining since I wasn't there. But all of you who are voting, please raise your hand. Okay, and I see Councilmember Hayes who wasn't there either, so we've got three votes, so that will pass and those minutes are approved. Thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on, in our agenda, section three, the non-consent items. Item 3A is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7889. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, mayor. To present a rezoning of a five-acre tract to land, we've got Andrew Freeman, Managing Director of Planning and Development Services. Andrew?
Yes, sir. So the purpose of this agenda item, as Mr. Miller was stating, is rezoned from agriculture to amended plan development 375 for the purpose of expansion of existing operations for a parking lot. The vicinity is Pilgrim Drive and Sanci Road, and the applicants are Joseph and Laura Street. A little background on the property, the adjacent land zoning is agricultural to the south and to the west and planned development to the north and east. The planned developments to the north are all auto car dealership-related uses. And then the land use surrounding the property is commercial to the north and east and undeveloped lots to the west and the south. The future land use designation in this area is suburban residential based on the 2010 comprehensive plan. And when planning zoning commission heard this item on their October 19 meeting, they approved it with a 6-0 vote. Here on your left-hand side of the screen is the surrounding zoning. So you've got agricultural, all in green, and then the various PDs, planned development zonings listed there, 375, 347, 320. So the lot in question or the area in question is directly behind those existing PDs and would actually connect street Toyota and street Volkswagen to be able to have a joint parking lot for additional business operations taking place behind. So when planning zoning looked at this, they of course considered the comprehensive plan. It does state suburban residential, but as you can see, that's not really appropriate in this location based on the commercial activity, the institutional uses to the west, likely would not be developed with residential. And planning zoning felt this wouldn't have a detrimental impact to approve the rezoning request to amended PV for the use thing requested. And this is a public hearing in first reading, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have before the public hearing.
Any questions for Andrew, council? Okay, then at this time, we will open a public hearing on this matter. You will see on the screen, if you're watching, it has the phone number on how to call in if you want to comment on this item, but also has it on the paper agenda or the digital online agenda if you're on the city's website. Stephanie, do we have any callers? If you're already on the line, you can press star nine to let Stephanie know that you wish to provide comment on this item.
Mayor, it looks like we do have one person who wishes, I have clicked to allow them to talk at this time. Paula, you may have to unmute yourself.
Is that the 2501 Stephanie, you think?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Star six allows you to unmute.
Yes, do you mind unmuting and stating your name, please?
Oh, they unmute star six?
There we go.
I think we clicked it by accident, I'm sorry. We don't have any comments.
Okay, okay, great. Well, we just want to be patient. If there's somebody trying to call in and, and they're learning a new skill, we didn't want to not give them adequate time to figure that out. So we don't have any commenters, then at this time I'll close a public hearing on this matter and we will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7889 in the vicinity of Pilgrim Drive and Sanci Road.
Okay. And moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve this ordinance. Any further discussion or questions from the council? All of those in favor, then please raise your hand. Okay, that passes with the 5-0 vote. Item 3B is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7890. Mr. City Manager?
All right, we have a ordinance concerning vacation of 3,900 square foot portion of North Adams Street. To present the item, we have Andrew Freeman. Andrew?
Yes, sir. So the applicant for this item is Johnny Merritt for Panhandle Pier LLC, which you'll be familiar with. Amarillo Economic Development Corporation brought a request for, for this project. This is related to the applicant purchasing the property. They found an issue when they went to finalize a deal where the existing building is encroached on right-of-way. That's gone back since 2003. Typically, these things come out when it comes time to close and they're doing their survey and seeing what issues there might be. There are no public utilities located in the area to be vacated. The location is a dead end that would not be expected to be extended due to the railroad and existing development to the south. So through this process of being requested, there was an appraisal done on the property to determine the fair market value of $1,300, which has been paid in preparation of this request. Typically, what you've seen in the past is that there's been utilities in place which allowed easements that were in exchange for that fair market value, since those stayed in place. So this is personally, it's been a while that it's paid fair market value. And then the planning and zoning commission took action on this during their October 19 meeting and approved it with a 6-0 vote. Here is the aerial of the area, you can see Adams Street there, dead ending into Panhandle Pier's location. And here's a street view of what that intersection looks like, and it's this building here that I'm highlighting that's encroaching on that right-of-way. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have, but this is a public hearing in first reading of this request.
Questions for Andrew, council? At this time, we'll open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against the item can now either press star nine if you're already on the call or dial in to the number on the screen. Stephanie, does it look like we have anybody who wants to comment?
No, mayor, we do not have anyone at this time.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7890 in the vicinity of North Adams Street and Northwest First Avenue.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number 7890. Any further questions or discussion from the council? Carrying none, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes with the 5-0 vote. Item 3C is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7891. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, mayor. This is a public hearing in first reading considering ordinance designating an area of the city near the medical district as a reinvestment zone number 11. It's almost five acres. This is an item that's been in front of the council in executive session and in regular session recently, but this will be the first reading to designate the zone. Second reading will happen next week, and right after that, the abatement will be presented to the, to the council as well. To present the item and answer any questions, we've got Kevin Carter, President and CEO of AEDC. Kevin?
Mayor and council, this is a ordinance number 7891. This is a public hearing in first reading of an ordinance to consider designating certain areas of the city as a reinvestment zone number 11 for commercial and industrial tax abatement. This zone is approximately 4.85 acres in the vicinity, in the vicinity of Amarillo Boulevard and Point West Parkway. You can see that there on the map. It's just north of the Amarillo Boulevard and just west of Point West Parkway. Designating a reinvestment zone is a step in the property tax abatement process under chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code. Local governments often use tax abamets to attract new industry and commercial enterprises and to encourage the retention and development of existing businesses. Designation of an area as a reinvestment zone is required before city council has the ability to offer a tax abatement. This is the first reading.
Council, do you have any questions for Kevin about this project? Okay, at this time then we will go ahead and open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against item 3C or ordinance number 7891 can now hit star nine if you're already on the call or dial in using the number on the screen. Stephanie, do we have any callers?
Mayor, we do not have anyone to speak at this time.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3C.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7891 in the vicinity of Amarillo Boulevard and Point West Parkway.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve ordinance number 7891. Any further discussion or questions from the council? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes with the 5-0 vote. Thank you, Kevin Carter, for being with us today. And we'll move on to item 3B, which is the consideration of a resolution extending the Environmental Task Force Committee. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, mayor. Every two years, we consider this. This is not the first time this council has seen the extension of the Environmental Task Force Committee. They have a lot of median substantive work in front of them and to present the item and make a recommendation to council, we have Blair, sorry, Blair Snow, Public Works Program Manager. Blair?
Hello. This item is just a resolution to continue the task force and does reflect the desire of the task force to continue pursuing those environmental sustainability options, specifically looking at composting programs and water conservation. I can answer any questions that you have on this group.
Questions? Howard, comments as a member of that task force?
Last month during the meeting, the task force met and discussed wanting to extend the life for this task force. So they're in favor of it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Blair. Do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution extending the Environmental Task Force Committee for two years so that they continue to research and evaluate environmental concerns as directed by the city council.
Okay. Been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by multiple people, but I'll tag Councilmember Smith, Mayor Protem Smith. And so do we have any further discussion or questions from the council on that, on that motion? Okay, hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I see five, so that motion passes with the 5-0 vote. And that brings us to the end of our agenda today and I appreciate the time and effort for each and every one of you. I hope the rest of your week goes well. We'll see you next week.